Meeting will come to order, please. First order of business is public comment. If you want it to be heard, please raise your hand. You'll be recognized. Come to the podium. Name and address. Three minutes. Anybody want to speak? No rush.
I did a little hard work today. I just wanted to thank the selectmen and the town of Lee for sponsoring the energy meeting that we had on Saturday. We had 25 people there and very good information for people. People were very interested, and I just wanted to thank you.
Thank you very much. Glad it was successful. Sir.
John Tappin, 187 Stepping Stones Road. One of the items on the agenda tonight is consideration or what's the next step for considering purchasing property from the church, and I just want to make a suggestion about that. Everything that I've seen has considered purchasing what appears to be just the minimum or only a tiny bit more than the minimum that would work for a design that's been proposed, and I don't think that that's a good initial opening for negotiation. And I'd like to suggest that this line where you start with the architect suggested, I think there's 185 feet on the front, on the road frontage, and go all the way back to the back property line. It doesn't give you very much more buildable area, but it helps primarily with zoning when you come to impervious surfaces and built-up areas and so forth. And it also moves the rear property setback way back. And this is not a survey line. I'm not making that claim. I don't know exactly where it goes relative to the cemetery. Whether this is drawing that's online is that accurate, but I'd like to suggest not starting with just the minimum. The church can always come back and say, no, it's too much land, or no, it's not enough money, but you probably won't get another chance 10 or 20 years down the road to do this again.
Thank you very much. Any other public comments? Thank you. Let's move on. Number three, discretionary preservation easement, public hearing, 203 Wadley Falls Road, map 33-7-0. Floor is open. Would you like to make a statement?
Well, David Meeker for 203 Wadley Falls Road. We would like to put a preservation easement on the barn. It's been, Dave Minor has looked at it. It is a historic barn and is in good condition at the present time, so that if you have any questions about the applicability of it, I'd be glad to answer them.
I was reading it. It was, how old is the oldest part?
Dave Minor estimates the oldest part around 1830. Then it was, there's four additions that have been gone over through the course of the years, but probably the latest part in the 1880s, something like that, with the milking parlor on the eastern side of it. So it's in good shape. We've put a new roof on it. We've put, rebuilt the footings under it. There was some damage when we moved in because the footings under the main column, one of the main columns was, had sagged and torn into the trunnels up. It's one of the beams, but that's been chained together for 40 years now, and it looks like it's going to last, and we have rebuilt the footings underneath it.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions?
On the board?
I'm fine.
Town administrator?
No.
Thank you. Any comments from the public with respect to this request?
Thank you. I move to approve the Meeker's application for discretionary preservation easement of the bond for a 10-year term and a 75 percent reduction assessed value and to authorize the town administrator work with the town council, property owner, drafting the easement document.
Seconds on the floor. Any further discussion? Hearing them, all in favor? Please say aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
I suppose we should close the public hearing?
0777, Cresta Camp at Little River Park. Please come forward. Yes. Public hearing is now closed.
Couple of documents we, there should be five of each kind. Now there should be five of each kind. Each.
Name and address?
Griffin Hots, 174 Wednesday Hill Road. Also second officer of troop 777, and leader of this campout. So here to request permission and access to camp at Little River Park this Friday. You'll see on your hand up there, this Friday from 5:30 till 9:00 a.m. on Saturday. So you have the outline of the events there and also the document stating some important things. We'll have 13 people there camping along the river down by, to the left side of the park. Contact information for me is on there and also the troop master. An important note about the fire, we are unable at this point to acquire access to the fire permit because Chief Nemeth cannot write fire permits to non-landowners, and I don't own the land. So whether you guys grant permission to this, then he has it all in writing. He just needs the signature, so when that's prepared, he can write it in.
Tom, any issues?
No issues.
Questions?
Can you clarify, where exactly are you doing this down?
Yeah, as you come out of the parking lot. There's a trail off to your left. You take that trail, there'll be a second left, and that brings you down along the river.
Okay, so down and back, not in the park where it's cleared off, down in the woods?
Yes.
I also see here that you're going to collect wood on the property, right?
Yes.
You think there's enough?
I went running there a couple of days ago, and there should be enough dead wood around.
The schedule looks pretty straightforward. Any issues?
No.
Please.
Dan Tappin, Stepping Stone Road, speaking as an individual. Dead trees, whether they're standing or fallen to the ground, are full of life. They're valuable to wildlife and to the forest itself. Snags, standing dead trees, and logs, fallen dead trees, provide essential habitat elements for at least 50 species of birds and 20 species of mammals. Frogs, salamanders, snakes, turtles, and a host of invertebrates use downed dead trees. You could call dead trees and logs critter condos, providing sites for dens, nests, feeding, perching, hiding, resting, courtship, and more. Little River Park is public land with many legitimate public uses, including a scout camping event. One scout troop collecting some dead wood for a campfire will not make a big difference in the dead wood available for wildlife. My concern is in setting a precedent for allowing gathering dead wood for campfires. If this type of activity became popular, the forests and local wildlife could lose valuable resource. Perhaps the board would consider setting a camp firewood policy. Thank you.
Comments, questions?
Can I ask this Tappin question?
Please.
We just cleared, or no, not we, you just cleared out that area for the woodcock. Is that going to cause issues, problems, or anything like that?
No, not actually not. And in fact, just as a slight aside, at a later, we just did the last cutting today, and as an aside, we probably should do a little slideshow for you to see what it looked like. The trees that were cut were not removed from the property. They were put into brush piles, and brush piles themselves are important for wildlife. Sparrows nest in them, small mammals, snakes use them. So over time, as the configuration of the brush pile changes, different animals will use that, and all the stumps are still there. They will re-sprout. Deer will browse on them. So it's a, overall, it's to improve the habitat for woodcock, but that's kind of a little, kind of like a keystone species. There's many other species that use that type of habitat, so it's definitely a plus, even though I spent two days with UNH students cutting down trees, and now I'm saying it's important to leave dead wood. They're all valuable wildlife habitat.
While you're there, do you happen to have a rough idea of what a firewood policy would be worded, or just exactly?
I didn't try to come up with a policy, but this has to do with scale. Like you said, one troop making a campfire isn't going to make that big a difference. And scouts doing campouts at Little River Park, that's a great thing, but if they all thought that was a great thing, eventually the dead wood could be moved back.
Interesting.
And I couldn't find it on the state park site, but state parks probably does not allow people to collect wood for their campfires. So many, many people in town cut their own firewood, purchase firewood, so there'd be no problem with bringing in firewood. However, the state parks does have very detailed policies about transporting firewood because invasive insect issues. So basically following their recommendations would be the way to go. And maybe this is a non-issue, but.
I think it's an important issue, so.
But, so I can look at the state park information and get that to you.
What I'd like to do is move forward with this, and then since it is new information, see if we can find some kind of camp policy in the future, and this will be a one-time thing until we have a policy.
We are, as a troop, quite able and willing to provide our own wood.
Okay. Well, that works out even better at this point. I was hoping you'd say something like that.
Yeah.
You're reading my thoughts. Any other comments or questions? No?
I'm okay with the change that they bring their own wood.
There we go. You got it. Let's say it. Move to grant Trail Life Troop, New Hampshire, 0777, permission to camp and build a campfire at Little River Park in the night of April 28, 2017. With the caveat that they bring their own wood. Seconds on the floor. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. We'll be looking for fire. I look for it in the night sky.
No, no, we won't.
Thank you again.
It's hard to look for those fireworks in the racetrack. Thank you. Chief Tronsfield.
Just want to introduce our newest officer, Antoinette Webster. She's a good addition. She's a part-time certified police officer from Advers, and she has some experience. We're looking forward to going to the Equal Town Academy in January.
Congratulations for 16 weeks. Glad to have you onboard.
Thank you. It's nice to meet you.
If I remember correctly, you also have a degree in forensic science. Is that right?
I'm working on my master's in it. I have my undergrad in, minor in forensics with a major in psychology and justice studies.
Sounds like a good.
But I mean, you remembered quite a bit.
I'm surprised. No, just joking.
So chief, will she be out on the road by herself, or will she be?
She'll be training. We're going to get her through firearms on Friday. She has all of her equipment, so she's qualified with the firearms. We have some in-house training on policies, the computer system. Then she'll be paired with an FTO, a field training officer, probably six or eight weeks where she does have some experience, and then she'll be in a cruiser on her own but with another officer on duty with her until she goes to the academy.
So the public can potentially see her out there doing her thing?
Absolutely.
Glad to have you onboard.
You can see her over the stairwell.
I have a different question. How's Officer Libertay doing?
Oh, he's fine. Yeah, he's fine. When I got checked and, you know, Sergeant Liberty was bit by a dog on Sunday, so he's fine. He was checked out and came back to shift.
Congratulations. Thank you. Got something else, Tom?
I do. I do. Got my yearly request to assist R and P D with Cinco de Mayo again. We've been doing this for about six years now. We go, I go over with another one of our officers. We escort the school buses through the crowds and everything. So it's Friday, obviously May 5th. Starts at 11 o'clock, so that's why I need to request permission to go over and help him again.
Assuming you have coverage, because you sometimes cover day shift.
Yeah, no, on Friday, Officer Brooks will be back. Corporal Brooks is back, so.
We want the selectman to grant permission for you to move forward.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom.
Roger Rice, transfer station manager, New Hampshire Beautiful Unanticipated Funds. Well, it's always nice to hear.
Roger Rice, 7 Misty Lane in Haring. He's getting tired to come up with, remember?
Wow.
And I have a photocopy of the check, the original went to Toen, and it's from New Hampshire the Beautiful, and New Hampshire the Beautiful, we have strong in New Hampshire because we don't have a bottle bill, so they aren't in Vermont, Maine, or Massachusetts. But the beverage, grocery, distributors get together, put in a pool of 100,000 a year, and that's dispersed to towns that are doing things that have to do with recycling, and those towns that know, put in an application for it. You're okay to do that, and they gave us that check, the grant, and the only thing is they asked us to put a bumper, I'd call it a bumper sticker, but a vinyl decal on the piece of equipment on both sides, saying that it was partial donation by, partially funded by New Hampshire the Beautiful. That's the only strings that are attached.
This is not the first time, right?
No, we got money for one of our bailers, and when, five years ago, when we took the previous Bobcat, we also got 5,000, so.
Comments and questions from the board? Move to accept $5,000 from New Hampshire the Beautiful Incorporated to deposit the funds into the transfer station equipment capital reserve fund.
Thank you.
Good. Just want to make sure, just looking. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Second, go ahead.
And also, the, it dawned on me that we might have the ability to read by for another grant, in that as soon as Chip and Toby heard that we were getting these unanticipated funds, Toby, by the way, came with me tonight, Toby Van Aken, their thought was, oh, oh, is there any chance that we can, because we don't have that much money in our equipment budget. It's down to maybe 1,100 dollars. We don't have enough to purchase a $4,000, it's called a containment sweeper, goes in the front of the Bobcat, and it's like a giant dustpan that doesn't just sweep, but takes it, and we would be able to use that inside the building, lower floor, upper floor, and outside, especially whenever we had a problem where something gets dumped out of the back of a vehicle, and it would just be a cleanliness thing for us to keep the transfer station that much cleaner. It is a, the quote I got from Bobcat was approximately 4,000, and it would help speed the process, and I'd like to make a request to the board if we could use 4,000 of that to go to purchase this containment sweeper if possible.
Town administrator?
I believe that the grant was specific to assisting with the purchase of the Bobcat, so I don't know whether we could then, so you're suggesting that we use part of the 5,000?
Right, because we purchased the Bobcat completely out of.
Right, no, I realize that, but I think that the grant was fairly specific.
If there's room, I don't have an issue with it, if it's possible.
Well, this is something new. It's not in the CIP or anything like that.
No.
I was going to say, we didn't ask for it with the Bobcat purchase. We didn't think about buying one.
Exactly what happened, we did not think about it at that time. We weren't actually aware that there was such a piece of equipment. And we did talk about, gee, this is the time, is there any attachments we need, and we didn't come up with anything specific.
Is the board, I don't, are you the agents to expend? That would be, that would be easy to do then.
So if you want to take the transfer equipment fund, we are agents to expend, so it could come out of that, so we don't have to get into the 5,000 is for the Bobcat.
Right, so well, right, we'll put the 5,000 in, and then my suggestion would be at the next meeting, we'll bring forward an agenda item to, plus I'm thinking at that point, two weeks from now, you could have more information, so we'll know exactly what the costs are.
All right, and we get a formal interview, so if you want to come up with that.
I don't see any issue. I think it's a good use of funds, and since there's enthusiasm at this point to sweep everything, let's see it happen.
I'll come back in two weeks. I'll do the preparation.
Absolutely.
All right.
Thank you for bringing it forward.
Okay, thank you.
Randy Stevens, highway supervisor.
I think it says highway supervisory.
Supervisory.
Oops. I just said that.
It says supervisory. I thought it was supervised, but that's all right. We'll get any extra word.
So first, first thing is weight limits. We posted some weight limits, February 28th, I believe. I think we can lift those now, so it doesn't, you know, it seems to be mostly interfering with UPS and some, some of these trucks are making deliveries, and it's kind of hassle for one to call me and get permission.
So we can remove it.
Frost is pretty well going out of the ground. I think we're over the danger period, so by time it be, if I brought it, the next meeting would be kind of late, so.
Yeah, I move to rescind the temporary spraying, spraying weight postings in all town roads that was instituted by the select board on February 27, 2017. Seconds on the floor. Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Motion carries.
Next item is paving bids came in last Thursday. They were all over the place. I think you probably saw the spreadsheet and everything with that. And I call it the two low bidders, just to make sure they understood it wasn't both alternatives, but they both understood it was one or the other, so. As you might remember, we had Alternative A, which is a lot of subdivision roads that have been 13 years, and the public safety complex here has been 13 years. The idea behind that was trying to keep the good roads good. Now, it's a lot of jumping around. I thought the prices would be a lot higher because just for a moment in time they would be over. Now, we had Alternative B, which was Packers Falls, Chinkin, Packers Falls, Gary, Pinkham, in the public safety. The way the bids come out, came out, it's, it would be about, let's see, 197,000 for Alternative A for the low bidder, and about 218,000 for Alternative B for the low bidder. So we have two ton here and there, so there's no, there's no room for any overrun or anything else, or any, it wouldn't be no money for shimmin' or anything like that, so. Kind of recommend that we keep the good roads good, go with Alternative A. Do the other roads next year. Have a little more time to work on them, get them ready. GMI is a low bidder for Alternative A. Call three references, because I haven't used them before. I got one excellent, one in the gray, and one acceptable or something like that. So I think that guy was like me, never happy.
First step is recognition.
So are you recommending GMI?
I am. So I did a, I did sort of a, and also was, in the bid was, big package was next to be picked up at the plant, and it was, Continental was 55, which is way too far away, one dairy, and you'd like a rock coming back with it. And then Brock's and Platteville, same price at 60, so I'd just like to get either one. I had to pick one. I'd go with Brock's, I guess, because they have plants running more often. Last year, they were higher, $5 higher than Platteville, but they both seemed, and the price last year was 6,450. Price asphalt went down during the summer, so I think it was 6,382 we actually finally ended up paying, so this year it's 6,280, Alternative A.
Comments, questions?
I like option A and the Brock's choice. I'm fine with that.
If I authorize the highway supervisor enter into a contract with GMI asphalt to complete the summer paving program.
Thank you.
Anything else? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Motion carries. That's it for me. That's it for you.
Oh, I did want to, yeah, I did want to mention the cabin chassis bids from new trucker who we in next Thursday, and equipment bids to go on the trucker to a second, choose the assets. Probably at least have the bid results next time I come in, at the next meeting, whether I'll be able to figure it all out or not, by then I kind of doubt it.
Okay.
Because I put in a lot of options, and I think there's going to be quite a, quite a range in price on both items.
Thank you very much. Next item is myself about select board goals. Maybe we started talking about those earlier on, and we kind of tabled them a little bit. I put some quotes on a piece of paper. These are mine. I just want to put them up for discussion, and hopefully we can agree on some of these. So the first one is continue the vision of providing workshops for carpentry heads for advancement. I know we discussed that, and do we have any movement on that at all, Scott or Karen?
No, I haven't.
Okay, but we are moving forward. I think we're going to discuss what the topic would be and so forth. I want to make sure we continue the vision of purchasing new equipment instead of used equipment for highway transfer and fire department, which I think the fire department does that regularly, and so forth. In fact, like I've always said before, we got some real neat personnel now, but when people retire, doesn't mean they won't be as good, but they probably won't have the same experience, so I want to continue that. I want to make sure that minutes are posted. I think we do a great job, the board of selectmen, but there's a lot of commissions and committees that don't always publish the minutes. I don't know how we can do it. Somehow can we think about doing something to urge them along to put the minutes up because right to know is important, and people would like to know.
Yeah.
Next thing, establish a process and policy for committees, commission, departments to update the board of selectmen twice a year on their activities. I don't see the practice of assigning a board member to each except required by law, unless you want to do it. I had this practice before when I was previously on the board, and we had committees and commissions come up and give a 10-minute review on their activities and proposed activities. So the entire board hears it, the town administrator, and it becomes part of public minutes. So again, these are thoughts, we're going to have to discuss it right now, but I think it's something I'd like to move in that direction. Also, we've been dealing with merit raises on and off for some time. We don't have a real formal policy. I thought maybe the board of selectmen could work on that, maybe ask the town administrator to see what other towns do, and maybe bring forth the document that we can formally discuss, which is important. I mean, obviously, people do hard work in the very merit.
Is there any chance that we can, because we don't have that much money in our equipment budget, it's down to maybe eleven hundred dollars. We don't have enough to purchase a four thousand dollar, it's called a containment sweeper, goes in the front of the Bobcat, and it's like a giant dustpan that doesn't just sweep, but takes it and, and we would be able to use that inside the building, lower floor, upper floor, and outside, especially whenever we had a problem where something gets dumped out of the back of a vehicle. And it would just be a cleanliness thing for us to keep the transfer station that much cleaner. It is a, the quote I got from Bobcat was approximately four thousand, and it would help speed the process, and I'd like to make a request to the board if we could use four thousand of that to go to purchase this containment sweeper if possible.
Town administrator.
I believe that the grant was specific to assisting with the purchase of the Bobcat. So, I don't know whether we could then, so you're suggesting that we use part of the five thousand?
Right, because we purchased the Bobcat completely out of.
Right, no, I realize that, but I think that the grant was fairly specific.
If there's room, I don't have an issue with it, if it's, if it's possible.
Well, this is something new, it's not in the CIP or anything like that.
No.
That's, I was gonna say, we didn't ask for it with the, with the Bobcat purchase, we didn't think about buying one.
Exactly what happened, we did not think about it at that time, they, we weren't actually aware that there was such a piece of equipment.
Right.
And we did talk about, gee, this is the time, is there any attachments we need? And we didn't come up with anything specific.
If you want.
Is the board, I, I don't.
Yes, I believe so.
Are you the agents to expend? That would be, that would be easy to do then.
So, if you want to take the transfer equipment fund, we are agents to expend, so it could come out of that, so we don't have to get into the five thousand for the Bobcat, just leave it alone.
Right, so, well, right, we'll put the five thousand in, and then my suggestion would be at the next meeting, we'll bring forward an agenda item to, plus, I'm thinking at that point, two weeks from now, you could have more information, so we'll know exactly what the costs are.
All right, and we get a formal, anyway, so, quote, if you want to comment on that.
I don't see any issue, I think it's a good use of funds, and since there's enthusiasm at this point to sweep everything, let's see it happen.
I'll come back, in two weeks, I'll do the preparation.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you for bringing it forward.
Okay, thank you.
Randy Stevens, highway supervisor.
I think it says highway supervisory.
Supervisory.
Oh, oops. I just said that.
It says supervisory. I thought it was supervisor, but that's all right. We'll get any extra word.
They couldn't pick it up till late either. So, first, first thing is weight limits, we posted some weight limits, February 28th, I believe, I think we can lift those now, so it doesn't, you know, it seems to be mostly interfering with UPS and some, some of these trucks are making deliveries, and it's kind of hassle, one call me, you get permission.
So we can remove it.
Frost is pretty well going out of the ground, I think we're over the danger period, so, my time would be, if I brought it, the next meeting would be kind of late, so, I would just.
Yeah, I move to rescind the temporary spraying, spraying weight postings in all town roads that was instituted by the select board on February 27, 2017. Seconds on the floor, further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks.
Next item is paving bids came in last Thursday, they were all over the place, I think you probably saw the spreadsheet, and then with that. And I call it the two low bidders, just to make sure they understood it, it wasn't both alternatives, but they, they both understood it was one or the other, so. As you might remember, we had alternative A, which is a lot of subdivision roads, have been thirteen years, and the public safety complex here has been thirteen years, and the idea behind that was trying to keep the good roads good. Now, it's a lot of jumping around, I thought the prices would be a lot higher because just for a moment in time they would be over. Then we had alternative B, which was, um, Pactus Falls, Chinkin, Pactus Falls, Gary, um, Pinkham, and the public safety. The way the bids come out, came out, it's, uh, it would be about, let's see, a hundred ninety-seven thousand for alternative A for the low bidder, and about two hundred and seven, two hundred and eighteen thousand for alternative B for the low bidder, so. We have two ton here and there, so there's no, there's no room for any overrun or any else, or any, it wouldn't be no money for shimmin' or anything like that, so. I'm kind of recommending we keep the good roads good, go with alternative A, do the other roads next year, I'll have to give a little more time to work on them, get them ready. GMI is a low bidder for alternative A, call three references, because I haven't used them before. I got one excellent, one in the gray, and one, um, acceptable or something like that. So, I think that guy was like me, never happy.
First step is recognition.
So, are you recommending GMI?
I am. So, I did a, I did sort of a, and also was, uh, in the bid was, big package was next to be picked up at the plant, and it was, uh, Continental was fifty-five, which is way too far away, one dairy, you'd be like a rock coming back with it. And then Brock's and Platteville, same price at sixty, so, I just like to get either one. I had to pick one, I'd go with Brock's, I guess, because they have plants running more often. Last year they were higher, five dollars higher than Pike, but they both seemed, and the price last year was sixty-four fifty. Um, the price asphalt went down during the summer, so I think it was sixty-three eighty-two, we actually finally end up paying, so this year it's sixty-two eighty, alternative A's. Table.
Comments, questions?
I like option A, and the Brock's choice.
If I authorize a highway supervisor, enter into a contract with GMI asphalt to complete the summer paving program.
I can.
Anything else? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
That's it for me.
That's it for you.
Oh, I did want to.
Oh.
I did want to mention the cabin chassis bids from new trucker doing next Thursday, and equipment bids to go on the trucker to a second, choose the assets. Probably at least have the bid results, um, next time I come in, at the next meeting, whether I'll be able to figure it all out or not, by then I, I kind of doubt it.
Okay.
Because I put in a lot of options, and I think there's going to be quite a, quite a range in price on both items. Okay?
Thank you very much. Next item is myself about select board goals, maybe we started talking about those earlier on, and we kind of tabled them a little bit, I put some thoughts on a piece of paper, these are mine, um, I just want to put them up for discussion. And hopefully we can agree on some of these. So the first one is continue the vision of providing workshops for department heads for advancement, I know we discussed that, and do we have any movement on that at all, Scott or Carrie?
Uh, no, I haven't.
Okay, but we are moving forward, I, I think we're going to discuss what the topic would be and so forth. I want to make sure we continue the vision of purchasing new equipment instead of used equipment for highway transfer and fire department, which I think the fire department does that regularly, and, and so forth, and in fact, like I've always said before, we've got some real neat personnel now, but when people retire, doesn't mean they won't be as good, but they probably won't have the same experience, so I want to continue that. I want to make sure that minutes are posted, I think we do a great job, the board's select member, there's a lot of commissions and committees that don't always publish the minutes, I don't know how we can do it, somehow can we think about doing something to urge them along to put the minutes up, because right to know is important, and people would like to know.
Yeah.
Next thing, establish a process and policy for committees, commission, departments to update the board of selectmen twice a year on their activities. I don't see the practice of assigning a board member to each except required by law, unless you want to do it. I had this practice before when I was previously on the board, and we had committees and commissions come up and give a ten-minute review on their activities and proposed activities. So the entire board hears it, the town administrator, and it becomes part of public minutes. So again, these are thoughts, we're gonna have to discuss it right now, but I, I think it's something I'd like to move in that direction. Also, we've been dealing with merit raises on and off for some time, we don't have a real formal policy, I thought maybe the board of selectmen could work on that, maybe ask the town administrator to see what other towns do, and maybe bring forth a document that we can formally discuss, which is important, I mean, obviously people do hard work, and they're very meritous, they should get these raises. I'd like to establish end of date for completing Livero Park, I know Randy had talked about it, where he thought it would be kind of done, and we need to have a commemoration or, or some kind of announcement where we could cut a ribbon or something. I think we're close of having it completed, I know he worked on that last field, and there's some rocks and things that have to be moved. Next one, I'm just putting this on the table, I know the facilities committee is coming up next, I, infrastructure improvement, I really want to push this new town hall issue, and I don't know if Stevens Field is still on, on the dock of a discussion, and of course I'd like to be able to get this to vote for the legislative body by March 18th. I think it's important, there's been enough discussion, and the facilities committee's met forever, and used to be town committees before, I think it's time to bring it to an end and make a formal decision. I want to revisit the benefit payment in lieu of vacation, I've had feelings on this before, people who are already in it, I want to grandfather it, but I, the idea of having this extra two weeks off, or three weeks, when you're here for fifteen weeks, fifteen years or something, what's the policy?
Ten, ten years.
Ten years, and you can buy yourself out, it's okay, but I think it's time to revisit it, again, people who are already here would be grandfathered. I assume that two hundred and fiftieth committee has sunsetted by now.
Yeah, they're putting what's dismembered.
Okay. Yep. And the, I want to make sure the facilities committee sunsetted June 30th, 2017, as with respect to our charge after delivery of a final strategic plan for upgrading, I want to see some kind of plan for the other buildings, doesn't mean we'll do it, but a phased approach in a timeline of what the possibilities might be. So these are my thoughts, of course, I'll entertain any thoughts from other board members as well.
Well, my ongoing thought is the one about the ten-year plan, that we never take the temperature of every, except every ten years, so.
I mean, on the master plan?
Master plan, yes, I would really like to get that to where at least quarterly we get some kind of report on, on the ten-year plan, or the master plan, and what's, what kind of movement we've had with it.
We have Chairman Smith come in, or representative, just update the board, just a general update where he thinks things have been completed, and then we can set some kind of format for that.
Okay.
I think that'd be a great idea.
Is that the debrief that you asked for?
Yes.
Well, the debrief, and then also on the, on the current one, you know, what kind of progress are we making, I mean, laws change, a lot of things happen over ten years that impact the ten-year plan, and whether you can continue with it or not, so.
Absolutely.
Please.
Thank you, to go back, we were discussing the merit increases.
Yes.
About ten, twelve years ago, we spent a lot of time and, and I think a pretty good amount of money on a step program.
I remember.
We still have that, and never got implemented, so that might be something that'll help you towards your goal.
You still have the documentation somewhere, I hope.
I have it.
Well, it isn't, it really isn't any good anymore, because I think that was 2008, the board adopted the step plan, but the town never followed it, so, none of the rates, you'd have to, we'd have to rebuild, not that we can't do it, but we'd have to recreate it from scratch.
And we had somebody else do that, right, didn't we?
Uh, it was the LGC, which no longer exists at the time, did it, and, and along with an evaluation of all the positions, and where they should be on the stepping grade plan, and job, creation of job descriptions, and so on and so forth, so, I mean, we certainly still have job descriptions, to the extent that they either have or have not been modified, and the stuff that was done in 2008, but the plan itself is not useful.
It just, it'd be good for a template.
Yes, I understand that. Is that something the board would like to consider?
Just for the sake of conversation, a merit policy is different from a step and a grade policy.
Yes, it is.
Or the two can sometimes work together.
Well, I think it's both of them are worth discussing, and then we have to come up with a plan, so.
I have it, if anybody wants to look at it, I can provide it to Julie.
Okay, I think if you can do that, you can.
Yeah, no, I haven't.
You can send it out to us, and then see if you can come up with a merit policy that some of the other towns do with respect to the same size town that we have.
Yeah.
Scott, you have anything else?
Um, a couple of comments, the last one that you had, we're gonna talk about it a little bit later, so I don't, maybe I'll wait and talk about that at that particular time.
Okay.
The turn of fiftieth committee, I think at this point, the heritage commission has the money.
Okay.
And there's still some money left in their particular designation, so I think maybe if the heritage commission just goes forward with whatever it is, because we got the five pole.
Yes.
And we got the dark skies lights, and there's still going to be some money left over, so, I've kind of had a conversation with both groups, and the people that were on the two hundred and fifty are comfortable with the heritage people making the decision in terms of what to use that money for.
Okay.
Um, the, um, infrastructure improvement, I agree we need to do something, and I'm with you in terms of doing something for the deliberative session in January. Um, Livero Park, I think after that field's done, I think that's the last thing, if on the, the original plan, I think they're doing trees and stuff.
Landscaping, yeah.
Well, trees and landscaping, but I think the other stuff is completed, but.
Let me check, Larry? Trying to see what the end date is, Livero Park, and then maybe have some kind of party or commemorative.
Is it end date to this, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, yes, we are working on the landscaping, um, we're gonna be presenting to the select board some ideas on that, we have to look at irrigation for any trees that we put in, otherwise you're just gonna die.
Sure.
Uh, we have to put in some sort of mulch for the trees that we put in, and replacement of the trees, so, that'll be on the agenda for our next meeting, next Tuesday, to talk about that.
I'm learning about, um, is there any more gravel or loam, is it all gone?
I think he used it all.
Used it all.
Yeah, there's one small pile of something.
But the pilot, there's a pile of gravel out there still.
Well, he's gonna build a, I think he's, his intent is to build a road around the new field, and he's gonna use the gravel for that.
Sounds good.
We're moving forward on the landscaping, what we can do with it.
See if we can find some kind of end date, and maybe have a, get together, you know, a big pair of scissors or something.
Popcorn machine.
You got it, that's what I'm looking for. Fireworks.
Chain.
I should bring that up.
The established process policy for committees and commissions, I personally like serving on those particular groups, one, it gives a conduit for me to learn what they're doing, but also for them to see, you know, if they have any questions for us, so, if you want to change the board policy for that, I don't mind, but I would like to continue serving on those particular ones.
Of course, I mean, anybody.
I think the people that are on those appreciate somebody coming to hear what they're having to say, do and stuff.
Because I would, it'd be nice to have somebody from there come and give a talk, you know, just a little update once in a while, and if any board member wants to submit, I don't have a problem with that whatsoever.
Establish a policy for committees and commissions minutes, good luck with that one.
Well, I'll try to.
I don't think we have any pull over any of those people, I, I don't know.
Well, that's not entirely true.
We've, we've put their names out there, we've listed who's not doing it on time, but that doesn't seem to change too much.
I mean, you could, you could take, there's a couple of nuclear options.
What would those options be?
Oh, the nuclear options.
The cause of action, so let's just suppose a citizen wanted to bring in ninety-one A, bring it in Superior Court, I'm not suggesting that that's what you do, but that's, that's, that's what would happen. Or the board appoints just about, I mean, really, appoints everyone to these committees and commissions, I suppose you could refuse to appoint, or take the people who are off that aren't getting you the minutes, that's why I called it the nuclear option. Um, I mean, I know that we, we ask, I don't, you know, certainly when we get them, we put them on the website, um, some are better than others in getting them to us.
And the minutes, I understand, don't have to be word for word for everything that people say, there could be summary statements.
Correct. And, and all of this, in terms of a policy to process, I mean, it all still falls under ninety-one A. The minutes have to be available within five business days.
Could you put out a notice from the board of selectmen, you know, as we just discussed, that minutes are extremely important for the right to know law, and just give a template of what you think the minute should look like, which are basically a summary statement, members present in action items.
Uh, there's actually a presentation, I think it's tomorrow, the twenty-fifth, in Durham, it's at seven o'clock, on the right to know law, if anyone's interested in attending, uh, I think it's being put on by NHMA, and I believe it's at the Durham Town Hall.
Can we also amend to that a list of those particular commissions and/or groups that are not up to date? Because I believe some of them are over two years old, so, I know they've met, so, can we put that on the list as well?
Mm-hmm.
Maybe we'll shame them, maybe, I don't know.
Yeah.
What if they walk off?
You have to take that risk.
You gotta take that risk.
You have to take that risk. Do we have any other appointments coming up from, I think we just, everybody start April first, I'm thinking.
I believe Mr. Meeker wants to be heard.
Please.
About the minute.
Uh-oh. Uh-oh.
And it, of course, it is a big job for people to do that, but I, I think, some years ago, I think I asked Julie about this ninety-one A, because it was just, and I, at that time, I think you, you said, well, if somebody asks for them, they are available in my notes, and if they want them in my notes, they can have them, and.
Can we read your notes?
Huh?
Writeable?
Notes are distinct from minutes, and the minutes, everything is supposed to be available at town hall, so if someone were to come in on day six to town hall and wanted, for example, the minutes from the last heritage commission meeting, they're supposed to be available at town hall.
They're not really the minutes until they've been approved.
No, no, actually, there is no, there is no requirement that minutes be approved, it's good practice, everybody does it, I'm not suggesting that anybody stop doing it, but there is no requirement that the minutes be approved. And I, I, there's a great deal of information that I can, that I have from the NHMA, I'd be happy to send it along with this about the minutes.
Absolutely.
And the best policy for doing draft minutes versus final minutes, but no, the minutes are supposed to be available.
And.
I've been counting on what you told me before.
And the law hasn't changed in the last five years, so.
I know, well, yeah, it, well, I think we all do the best we can.
Oh, absolutely.
And, so.
You're not one of the offenders.
I, I, I try not to be, but it's not five, not five days.
You must have a guilty conscience or something.
Can, can we, uh, what?
John Chapin, speaking as a trustee of trust funds, and I think, Julie, you, we're repeating what you said about draft minutes.
Mm-hmm.
In the classes that I've gone to, that the attorney general's office puts on, they're very specific about the minutes have to be available within five days, but they can be draft minutes, and prominently marked as draft, and therefore subject to revision, but they do need to be there within the five days.
They need to be available.
Thank you.
Scott?
Um, two things, one, can we also remind them, one, that they have to notice their meetings?
Yes, that's the other.
And two, that an agenda is not required, it's not in the law, they do not have to provide an agenda, so.
Um, I also clarified with an attorney at NHMA, because there was one, um, committee that posts all their meetings at once, um, for example, by saying, and I, I'm just picking this, and I'm not meaning to point out any particular, oh, we meet on the, every other Tuesday at seven o'clock, at such and such, the attorney said that is not sufficient, that each meeting needs to be separately noticed, so.
It can't be done, it's on the same page with all the dates?
Nope. And, he seemed to indicate that there needed to be a notice for each meeting.
Doing something to look at it.
Um, the other thing I'd like to add to your list, that we need as a group to decide what the board is comfortable about in terms of the amount of the assigned fund balance.
Yes.
We have talked about it, we kicked the can down the road, and I think we need to have that as one of our to-do.
I agree. Of course, this is not the final list, as next time we meet, we can look at it, discuss it, add to it, or take it away, just want to get something down for discussion.
It's fine.
Okay. Next thing, selectman Bugby, facilities committee, you have the floor, sir.
Talking about the last item you have on your list.
Oh, there we go.
Uh, the facilities committee left met last week, two weeks ago, whatever, and one of the things they're doing is, after we're not using AG anymore, um, looking at, flushing out what you just asked for in terms of the plan and stuff. So they've got a very aggressive thing to get done before June 30th, so I guess one of the things that I had an issue with, is they have a lot of work to do in two months, and they're going to do something for the town hall, but then they're also gonna do something in terms of space for the, um, historical society.
Yes.
Town hall, and the library, and that's very aggressive, so, one, I don't think there's enough time, so, two, their charge does end June 30th, we might want to consider extending that particular time to give them some more space, some more time to do that particular report, um, because I don't think there's gonna be enough time to give it the time that it needs to give something to the public so they can make a worthwhile decision, so, that's my thought, and if so, we probably need to change their particular charge. Um, the other part that came out of the meeting, the other thing that came out of that meeting was, um, pursuing the church property purchase, that falls upon us to spearhead that particular charge. One, I think we need to get somebody to assess, um, in terms of, either it's what Mr. Chapin is proposing, or what the original architect proposed, but how much that particular parcel or parcel is worth, and work up a document in terms of a proposal to the church for them to react to, in terms of the price and the size of that particular parcel. So, even if they build on Stevens Field, they still think, the committee still thinks that we need to purchase, or should purchase, that property for space, but also in terms of when we start doing kind of renovations or building at the facility, even if we don't do the town hall there, there's gonna be, need extra space for construction equipment, space to make, you know, messes of dirt piles and stuff, and there's not really that much space there now, so, that's their thought process, so, those are two things.
So now in saying that, I don't want this to drag on forever, do you have a date in mind?
I'm just thinking that two months is not enough time, I'm thinking, give them three to four months, maybe to the end of August.
Carrie?
I, I, I think, at the very least, by June, they should have a plan for a building. I mean. Just saying they're not gonna be ready is a little open-ended, there should be, there should be something that's decided, that we can, that we could start moving on while they, while they look at the rest of the, how many phases there're gonna be in it, or whatever.
So, how about if we say, we would like to see a report for, like, the town hall by June 30th, and then give them a couple extra months to finish the other two.
I can agree to that. We're parsing that. We can parse it, at least we get to that point of, you know, if it's gonna be in Stevens Field, if we, if we separate that out, if you really feel it going that way, we just, that'll be the end of it, which will take off that charge.
I would, I would like to be a little more firmer than that, I think it would be good if we would get a recommendation for town hall, for the town hall by June, and then if the balance of it, the next one would be the library, whatever.
No, we're saying the same thing, I agree, yeah, I was saying the same thing, so, I'll get you in a second, but, John, June 30th, something with the town hall, but I do realize, as I said, other existing buildings and property, I know that's not gonna come easy, whether it's historical society, or some other building that needs repair, and if it requires purchasing church property, if they allow it and we come to negotiation, I can understand that as well. But I do agree with Carrie, we need to have something solid, so, so we agree to that June 30th will at least have something with respect to town hall, and then do an extension for a modified charge, which means to look at the rest of the, the needs of the town, and have something done by August 30th.
Thirty-first.
Thirty-first. Thank you.
We need that extra day.
Okay.
All right, so can we do something official, because they need to be notified officially, because right now, they have the charge they originally gave them, so if we're gonna tweak that, we need to have something officially, I think.
You still attend the meetings, right? I mean, I would think based on this conversation, you could certainly just bring that information back to the.
And then be reflected in the minutes anyways.
Yep.
Okay. Sir?
With respect to this, the, uh, making a, a commitment to the town hall really requires information about the church property, which is your responsibility, so, you will need to plan to have that resolved. So, you will need to plan to have that resolved so that the Facilities Committee can make a reasonable... As Scott mentioned, the current plan, regardless where the Town Hall is located, the, using the current Town Hall as a meeting room and accessories for the Historical Society and the library means that we will have a lot more parking, and there's not enough parking there at the current time. So, as Scott mentioned, it's considered that regardless of where the Town Hall is located, we need to consider the purchasing of the church property.
I understand, but that can be part of the decision. If they say, if they say, "Okay, here's the, here's the decision we," or the recommendation, it's contingent upon acquiring the church property.
Well, we need to know how much...
But it can still be a decision.
We need to know whether the costs, what the relative costs are. They're not independent of cost for our recommendations. So anyhow, I think that there's written on the select board as well.
I do understand that. And I think Scott understands that, to proceed with that as well.
So in terms of proceeding with the church property, is that something we want to do as a group? Because it's kind of like what David says, the chicken and egg. If they need to know how much property and how much it is before they make recommendations, I don't think the church is going to move that quickly. I don't, I just don't. I don't see them coming back in a month and saying, "Hey, yay or nay." I think it's going to take them a little while.
I think you're willing to open that discussion?
I, if I'm empowered, right at the moment, I'm, I don't have the authority for the board to go and say, "Okay, let's find out how much, one, we're going to buy, two, how much is it worth, and three, make an offer to the church." I think that's this group, not me.
It seems to me there are a number of steps. I mean, first you'd have to have, first you'd have to decide how much property you're talking about purchasing, then you'd have to have it surveyed, then you'd have to have it appraised. None of that is going to happen by June 30th.
Yeah. It takes time.
I mean, and obviously, you'd need permission from the church, because you'd be sending all these people onto their property and... So, I mean, none of that will be accomplished by June 30th. It certainly seems very unlikely. And the first thing we'd have to do is, you know, get the cost, this is what it's going to cost to do the survey, okay, now this is what it's going to cost to do the appraisal, and then move forward on it if that's what the board wants to do.
Is there any sense that the church is even interested?
Yes.
They are, okay. At least there's something positive here.
The email that Mr. Kinberg sent for us to the church, and the response that came back is they will respond to an offer, a legal offer from the town for a particular parcel. It's going to take them a period of time, because they have to go through their process internally to make a decision. So, it's not going to happen just like that, it's going to take time. But, yeah, we have to, one, identify what the parcel is, two, how much, you know, land that's going to be, and get it... I don't know if we need to survey it, you'd probably have to have it assessed.
Appraised.
Appraised, excuse me, in terms of the way it's far.
Well, I want to...
Yeah, okay. I mean, I honestly don't know, I'd have to talk to an appraiser. I mean, if they, you know, I'm not sure that they want to go out there and just say, "Well, it's, you know, we think it's kind of from that tree to..." I mean, maybe they can. It seems that they would need something a little more definitive, but we could certainly talk to them.
There might be a survey that is already done and could be used.
I guess hearing all this new information, I want to proceed with this, so I would like to request that Selectman Bugbee make the contact on this and proceed to find out at least what the interest is and go ahead and see what the opportunities are. And I'd like, at this point, then to extend the overall charge to August 31st, so we get this information down and come forth with a plan at that point of whether it's going to be on Stevens Fields or on church property, or if we still perceive the church property, what would be on the church property? And see if we can tie it up at that point.
Well, I think the Facilities Committee is recommending you buy the church property no matter what.
I understand that.
So, how about if we go back to the Facilities Committee and, one, determine what space? Because Mr. Tappin gave us this little map, which is quite nice, and the Facilities Committee has also talked about drawing the line straight back. So, how about if the Facilities Committee meets, determines what the space is, and I contact somebody to find out, "Can you give me an assessment on this particular parcel approximately?" And then I will have a conversation with the church and say, "This is how, where we are, do you mind if we have somebody come on, maybe do an assessment or, you know, do a survey or whatever, and see what they say about that?"
The board may recall that we had to hire an appraiser a couple of years ago for the Booker House. I can certainly pull out the people that bid on that and who the successful bidder was. And, you know, we may just want to go with that individual in the interests of time and expediency.
There's a cost to that, it was like three?
A few thousand dollars, it seems to me, if I'm recalling correctly.
And I do agree with you, there's opportunity for the town to access land near the town's center activity. It's an opportunity, I don't want to give it up. Just as when there was possibility of the town on the other side, we weren't able to pick that up for the price, so... I understand the two separate issues, but they're still integrated.
Okay.
But let's move forward, and so we'll redirect this, or you can bring it back to the Facilities Committee, we're going to extend it to August 31st.
The only thing I have a concern with Mr. Tappin's plan is it kind of goes right through the cemetery. I either have to have the whole cemetery or just part of it versus...
We'll work out the details, right?
Yeah.
I, I did say that was not surveyed.
It was a hand...
Well, just in terms of just roughly, you know, it would probably be nice, because I don't, I don't think the town retains that cemetery. I don't know if the church does, but... Do we know how many gravestones are back there? Because...
It's hard to tell, they're extremely old, they're just stones.
It currently has a split rail fence around it. It's roughly like 36 feet by 40 feet. You have to use some imagination to imagine that there are any stones in there. And on the master plan, all the cemeteries are listed, and it says, "Two stones."
Just two.
That's what it says. But I don't know whether that means that there are only two that were known or...
All right, well, I'll, I'll interface with the church and if you can find out and see if the appraiser can do an appraisal about, if we have something that looks like this, can he best, because it's a rough idea. I suspect if it, you know, aligns with a little bit, it's not going to be tens of thousands, it's going to be thousands of dollars, so, okay.
We good?
Can I just confirm, is the, is the August 31st, is that the only date now, is the August 31st?
August 31st.
The first date's gone?
That's correct.
The May 31st?
We're going to extend to August 31st, 2017.
June 30th is gone, okay.
For a final draft report from the Facilities Committee.
But that draft report is for all the buildings or just one building?
All of them.
All buildings.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think that was both things, huh, Julie Glover?
You may recall that there was some disagreement across the state relative to whether the towns had the right to postpone the March 14th election. And there were a couple of bills proposed, and in my opinion, fortunately, the governor just signed House Bill 329, which ratifies all of the election results. So that's a good thing. Second, that the law was drafted such that it is up to the governing body, in our case, the select board, to determine whether you want to hold a public hearing and take a formal vote to ratify all of the other action and items that were transpired on the postponed meeting, which would be, obviously, all of our warrant articles. And it may recommend that for any towns that had either bond votes or zoning ordinance changes, that it would probably be a really good idea for the board to do that. So, just mentioning this to the board, wondering whether you want to schedule a public hearing for the next regular meeting date. I think we just have to publish at least 72 hours in advance, so we would have time to do that. And hold the public hearing so you can discuss it, and then hopefully ratify all of the results and put the whole thing to bed.
We did have a lot of stuff associated with the planning boards, which probably worthy at this point to be...
It has to go in the newspaper too, right?
It has to be in the newspaper and on the town website.
Okay, let's do it.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Item 11, motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you.
Discussion?
The two, for the two nonprofits, we will send those to the attorney.
Yes.
Because I think there's...
That was the recommendation.
I don't think they're going to get, personally, I don't think they're going to get a full exemption. I think they've got some profit making enterprises there, they need to be appropriately reviewed.
I thought, did we go through this before?
With the daycare.
The daycare.
Last year.
Right, I thought we did.
And a decision was made to grant the exemption, but they're recommending that the board take another look at it. But yes, if you approve the consent agenda, that would mean I'll contact the attorney.
Yeah. Because I think if I remember correctly, in terms of the daycare, we gave it to them, but then we said, "Next year."
Yes.
Because they were, I mean, well, we can't afford, whatever.
That is correct.
So, okay. So we'll get a recommendation from the attorney in terms of percentages, or is the assessor gave recommendation in terms of this percentage is full profit versus...
I don't think that the assessor went that far with it, I think that that's something that the attorney may want to look at.
So we get back from the attorney, the attorney thinks, "These are some profit."
Right.
And then the assessor will make a determination in terms of the percentage, so it's...
I think it'll be a joint effort, to be honest. Yep.
Thank you.
It's been moved in a second, any further discussion about the consent agenda? All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
I cough at night now, ever since I got there. I swear I picked up something in the hospital.
When you go to hospital, you always pick up something.
I washed my hands every three minutes.
There's a disease written.
The roundabout video?
Yeah, that was neat.
I sent it to Denise to put on.
That was neat.
So they'll make tests later on.
Yeah.
Denise on the map, wow.
Well, I think it's good, and I like how they showed, "Don't do this."
Need to do that. Fortunately, if we can educate the people that live in the town, maybe they can... Because I was there the other day, and there was a big tractor trailer, and he was pulling a bulldozer? Or an excavator, sorry. So, of course, it hangs off to the side, and there are people, and he's trying to go around the outside, and of course, he's already in the inside lane, and people are trying to get past him, and of course, it ain't going to work. So they're going up that thing that's in the middle, that, and they're driving on that to get past him, it's like, gee.
That's there for the tractor trailer to go.
That's correct.
Yeah, but they were driving on it just so they wouldn't get hit by the truck, the excavator tracks that were sticking out.
That's been the biggest percentage of our accidents lately, is that, people trying to force it in there.
Got something?
Yes.
Got something, okay.
Well, I mean, obviously, I need to talk extensively about the whole taxi thing.
Yes.
She's gone. This is what I had sent to you earlier, just, I don't know at what point you're going to...
Yes.
That's for the first non-public.
So are you doing, getting out the candy, or did you sign all this stuff?
He had that before, because he was a good boy. His wife texted me and said, "He deserves a note."
Oh, how sweet. You have a miss?
I still think they're a waste of yours.
Oh, my goodness.
I think this term, beggars can't be choosy, can you, Simone?
I didn't beg.
What is this?
I'm willing to.
What is this?
Oh, no.
Oh, God.
Okay.
I'm going to take line four. Line...
Whatever you like. Back it up, you can't go anywhere, so what do you do yet?
When do we go on YouTube?
It's set up, we just have to, Denise has to work tomorrow with Virtual Town Hall to figure out how to get the link on the website. Again, just a reminder that there's other things running alongside.
Cappuccino.
Did we, there was some people that were delinquent in paying their timber and excavation taxes or something? Are they all up to date? Did we get a...
No, I know I've gotten a contact from Chinburg, and I know they're aware of it and they're working on it, and I don't, I don't know about the other one.
Did we get a periodic update from the tax collector in terms of who's late and who's, or who monitors that?
Are you talking about the timber tax?
Timber tax and the excavator, who's the one that says, "Hey..."
That's Karen, I believe.
Okay.
Right?
So you're looking for an update?
I'm just looking, does, because the last time I learned that some people were, didn't pay when they were supposed to. So I'm wondering who marshalls that and who can tell us, "Hey, you know, these people haven't paid for six months," or...
I believe that's the Planning and Zoning Administrator.
Okay. Can we ask you to see if she can give us a list of who's delinquent?
I also think, though, that there's no, there's no penalty provision in the law.
Well, they have, no, it says they have to pay within so much time, I thought it said in the form. Maybe I'm mistaken, but I thought it said they have to pay within so much time.
Thank you. Next item, I move to accept the public and non-public meeting minutes from April 10th, 2017. Discussion? All in favor? I see aye. Motion carries. Motion carries.
He's putting away.
He put all his stuff away, but he's got more stuff to do. He's got more work to do.
I'm just getting my pen out, okay? It's all I'm doing, is getting it.
But it's one. See, this is what, this is what happens when you pay him, he gets kind of lax.
I think it's like sugar, you know, the sugar blues is going the other way, instead of highs going down.
Sorry, did you say what, when you, when you what him?
You mean, what me?
Yes.
You thought that was just chocolate, there's carcinogenic stuff in there.
We're being recorded.
It's called liquor.
No, 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 nothing like that, something more strong.
You need to address both the people that are listening.
Both? Well, you're going on YouTube, so you're going to have thousands and millions of people watching.
You never know. You never know. We could go viral.
Yep, yep.
I move to accept the manifest 21, a week's payroll ending April 23rd, 2017.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Motion carries. Item 14, motion to enter into non-public session RSA 91-8:311, see selection, elections, see tax deeds, a library evaluations, eight department evaluations.
Second.
Mr. Bubey?
Yes.
Right. Mr. Lacoste? Yes. Motion carries. Okay, I move that the lead select board accept the following tax deeds, provided that the 2014 taxes, penalties, and interests are not paid by end of business day, May 5th, 2017. Map lot, map lot 4/7/500, map lot 3/2/400, map lot 8/2/700, map lot 12/1, map lot 24/1/200, map lot 23/1/500, map lot 20/11/00, map lot 1/5, map lot 30/1/3, map lot 9/1/1300.
Second.
Further discussion?
Could you, could you redo that?
Hearing no discussion, and just full of laughter, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, thank you. I move that the least select board refuse to accept the following tax deeds in behalf of the town in accordance with the, in New Hampshire RSA 80:382-A. No, we accept the deed of, for any property that is characterized as mobile home or trailer, map lot 13/5/200, and map lot 19/3/200.
Second.
Agreed.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. And it says see attach, so I don't know what that is there at this point. I move to seal the minutes of the public, the non-public session.
Second.
Roll call, Bubey?
Yes.
Yes, I'm here.
Lacoste? Yes. Thank you.
Well, he seconded it. What do you want me to do, 30?
No, you have to roll call.
Well, I know, I understand that.
So you have to say yea or nay.
Well, I said, here. Here. Here, 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 here.
This is a letter, all the material is the unlearned respect. Yes, okay, 16, miscellaneous unfinished business. Yes, please.
Library had their birthday probably last Friday, the cake was good.
Thank you very much. Mr. Brown?
We, the raceway opened up this weekend, and we started our new procedures, et cetera, et cetera. It actually went very, very well, because we found one exceedance for two seconds.
Yes.
Nailed it to the car that did it.
Yes.
Advised the, the association, which was a new association, NIMSA, which is a national mini, something or other, I forget. And they are going to respond by telling all their drivers that they have to, they didn't realize that there was a muscle of ordinance also that they weren't complying with, so they're going to tell everybody that they have to comply with that. And everything went just smooth as silk.
I assume cherry bomb mufflers, huh? Cherry bomb mufflers?
They are, they were running, one of them was running a cherry bomb muffler, and we got an exceedance of 102 for two seconds, which, we're running against a 97, so, they reacted to it, said they'd fix it.
Good.
And that was the only exceedance we had, with all the racing that took place, so, and everybody was very cooperative about it, went very well.
The only thing I have left is that, on the advisory budget committee, you want to just tell us what's happening with?
Oh, that person.
He's coming to the next meeting.
Right, so he's interested in, in doing it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we won't be able to have another member of the advisory budget committee?
Does he want to come to the next meeting?
Yes.
He does.
We sent him a letter, and he responded, and.
All right.
If you remember, there was somebody had a write-in, and they asked him, and I guess he was not interested at that time. Mr. Murdock had approached me a while back, while getting more involved with the town, and I said, well, there's openings in lots of places. I said, one of the more interesting ones is budget. I said, so, then, he said, I'd like to take a crack at it. I said, I'll check with the board.
Good, okay.
Anything else?
No.
Dave's? Move to your turn.
So moved.
Thank you.